I didn't check to see who was offering that tonight.
Go ahead.
Offered by Commissioner Lockhart, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, I'd like to thank you for bringing us all here together at the beginning of this year, and I'd ask that we start this year off right and together, and that we serve the people of this community the best that we can. Together we move forward. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Presser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poole?
Brazza?
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Mr. Watt?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of a meeting of December 22, 2017. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm moving to accept the minutes of December 22nd meeting and dispense from the formal reading.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion will be approved. I would like to take a moment to recognize our special guests in the audience today. This is the Boy Scouts Say Merry Pack Number Seven, and Amber Midaw is here as their group leader, and I want to thank you or welcome you and all the boys that are with you, and it's delightful to have you here. I hope that you find some things of interest, and if you're able to stay for the entire meeting, if you have a chance to stay afterward and ask some questions, I'm sure I and a couple other commissioners and maybe some staff would be happy to talk with you. So, thanks for being here. Tonight is a very special night for the city of Sandusky. We have, for the last several years, revived an old tradition in Sandusky, which is the Pride Awards, and this is an opportunity to showcase the many residents that we have, and we can only scratch the surface, but the many residents that we have who are nominated by their fellow citizens and some staff members for the outstanding investment they've made in residential and commercial properties. And here to introduce those folks, talk a little bit about the process, is Talon Flor, our neighborhood outreach coordinator. Talon?
Thank you, Commission President, and I'd just like to thank the rest of the Commission and along with staff that helped me make these Pride Awards possible, bringing them back. It's a program that the residents really love, and so it's awesome to get to have these kind of award recognitions for our citizens. First, I'd just like to talk a little bit about what the Pride Awards are. So, like Commissioner Murray said, the Pride Awards are given to homes or businesses that have been either immaculately maintained or substantially improved over the last year. And as you can see on your screen there, this is, that's this year's full, full class of nominated properties, and they all represent one of those two things. So, we really appreciate all the Pride nominees being able to make it with us tonight and join us. We took nominations last fall, and the community voted on the winners, but we had a really, really strong class, so we really wanted to recognize everyone that was nominated. So, that's what we're here tonight to do. So, first, I want to go through and just kind of read through all the properties that were nominated. So, I'm just going to go one by one through a group here, and they will come in and receive a certificate for their nomination. So, first, Mr. and Mrs. Geeson, 514 Pierce Street. You can just walk up to the front there and receive your award. Ms. Karen Gegner of 912 Fourth Street. Mr. and Mrs. Michael Halleck of 1503 McDonough Street. Mr. David Hurt of 1109 Mylan Road. Mr. and Mrs. Joe Kennedy of 1714 Sandusky Street. Mr. and Mrs. Michael Hohenstein of 1818 Sandusky Street. Mr. and Mrs. Elmer Cromer of 217 Finch Street. Mr. Bill Mayo of 1508 Columbus Avenue. Mr. and Mrs. Tony Sadoti of 1117 Campbell Street. And Mr. Steve Tamborino of 1313 Central Ave. Rainbow Muffler and Brake have already received their commercial certificate, and Dockside Accommodations, as well, was another nominated commercial property. So, those were all of our, those were all of the properties that received nominations. But in addition to those, like I said, we had the community vote, and those are, those are our commercial nominations as well. And out of all our nominations, we chose, or the community chose, five residential and three commercial properties that really stood out. And so now I'm going to go over those. So, the first one is 1309, Mr. and, Central Ave, Mr. and Mrs. Ken Bass. And so, what the person, come on in. Yep, how's it going? And the folks that nominated them pointed out how they really enjoyed their seasonal changes and how the house looked, looked really nice, but also well-lived in at the same time. And then, oh, I'm sorry.
Congratulations.
Mr. and Mrs. Roger Brown of 1401 Central Ave. And the person who nominated them really pointed out all the fine details in their home and said they noticed something new every time they go past.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeffrey Elkert of 1002 Carr Street. Mr. and Mrs. Eric Hofstrader of 1412 Columbus Avenue. And Mrs. Patricia Holtz Miller-Printy of 1306 Tyler Street. The person who nominated her pointed out how immaculately kept her house is, and Mrs. Holtz Miller-Printy has lived in the same, in that home for decades now, and she expressed to us how much it meant to her to win this award, so I'm very excited. Sixty years she's lived in her house, so there you go. That's Pride. And then, these are our commercial winners. First, Mr. Leon Groff for 604 West Washington Street. We have the Sandusky State Theater, 107 Columbus Ave. Congratulations, guys. And finally, we have Mr. and Mrs. Tom Bodnar for 614 Columbus Ave. Mr. Tom Bodnar.
I don't know if he's an award winner or a PR.
So, that completes this year's Pride, Pride winners, and we really appreciate them for all their efforts and everything they've done.
Thank you, Talon, for organizing that, and I do want to say to the folks who are back at home, I hope this makes you jealous, and I hope it makes you want to keep up with your neighbors. Sometimes it's a good thing to keep up with the Joneses, and what these folks and prior, prior Pride Award winners have done is to make an investment of their time, sometimes their treasure as well, of course, but to make a place that's special for them and their families and for their neighbors. And those folks end up being, in a lot of ways, firewalls even for the city. Those are, these are special places that encourage beauty and thought and community involvement, and it really makes a big difference. So, thanks for all that you and so many other homeowners and commercial property owners do to beautify the city. So, we turn now to audience participation. Before we start that process, let me note that items seven and nine have been removed from the agenda for tonight, and so we will still be considering items one through six and eight on the regular agenda, and of course, the couple of items, the three items that are on the presented agenda. So, anyone wishing to speak to any of those items, please step to the microphone, give us your name, and share with us your thoughts or questions.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. Were you keeping number one on here? This is the second reading?
Yes.
For the art program? Okay. I would like to speak on that. It looks like this is the second reading for the art program. It's being calculated, money's being calculated off of the admission tax, and it's, the money's being taken out of general fund, and it's going to average around $43,000. It could be more, according to what they're taking in on admission tax. I find this as a non-essential expenditure. I can't believe the city is voting yes on this. None of you up here should be voting yes to waste money like this. Some of this money will go for mural ads for companies on their buildings. Some will go for projects, for tours to stand in front of, to take selfies. The city needs so much more in our city, and you're taking this out of general fund. We're way behind in taking down these houses. Two hundred houses are still waiting. I mean, we're just not dent, making a dent in that at all. Two hundred houses sit rotting, bringing down evaluation in the neighborhoods. They get condemned, and they sit there for years. We have streets that need to be done, sidewalks. I just, I just can't believe you people will waste money like this. When we did issue eight, we thought that you would at least be responsible with our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there anyone else present who wishes to address any of our agenda items? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we will turn now to a public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment for 2513 Venice Road and 1651 Tiffin Avenue, and that will be presented by Casey Sparks, our chief planner. Ms. Sparks, welcome.
Just give me one moment here.
Sure.
Again, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Commission. The city of Sandusky has applied for a zoning amendment for 2513 Venice Road and 1651 Tiffin Ave. On the screen, you'll see the existing zoning map, as well as an aerial photo of the properties. The existing zoning map is a little bit different than it was to date. If you'll recall, we did rezone these properties to residential multifamily last year. At that time, we had interest in a development, and that, unfortunately, that did not pan out. So, city staff has made progress in movement, and it was approved through Planning Commission to rezone the property to general business. Staff believes that the comprehensive plan calls for industrial uses within the area. However, understanding that the property logically would be suited for commercial development as the uses within the area are commercial and intent, and if you recall, the city has worked with Ohio Development Service Agency to demolish the former gas station that was on the structure and remove the underground tanks. As you, as stated, Planning Commission did approve the rezoning of this property to general business, and so we are asking City Commission to move forward with the rezoning as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Commissioners, any questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on the proposed zoning map amendment? Seeing no one move forward, the hearing is closed, and thank you, Ms. Sparks, for your presentation. Commissioners, we have several communications received from staff requesting or recommending various legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those? And a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So, Commissioners, we have, first, the consent agenda. Are there any items that any of you wish to have removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Then, Ms. Cresser, would you please read the consent agenda items into the record?
Yes. The first item is a consulting contract with George Polis for primary alternate master plans reviewer and primary alternate building official. Item B is a consulting contract with John Pike for alternate plans reviewer and alternate building official. And item C is the annual agreement with public sector to renew the Microsoft Office 365 software.
Would someone care to make a motion with respect to these consent agenda items?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A, B, and C, and declare that these three ordinances, as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with Section 14, whether it be, whether it be within Section 14 or 13 of the City Charter, but I believe all three of them are Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Ms. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
Those ordinances are adopted. Ms. Cresser, would you present regular agenda item number one, please?
Yes, item one is a second reading for an ordinance amending Part One Administrative Code Title VII Boards and Commissions by the addition of Chapter 187 Public Arts and Culture Commission of the codified ordinances and the manner and way specifically set forth here and below.
Commissioners, having heard this communication the second time, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Ms. Whoopsir, as a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead. It's all right. I have some questions. I'll wait till he's finished. Maybe I'll answer them.
Okay. Mr. Whoopsir, and maybe Mr. Foltz has a question for you. At the last meeting, we had a discussion about wanting to put into, I believe it was at the meeting itself. It could have been a discussion subsequent, and I can't remember now, but there was a desire to put into the legislation some specific criteria?
Yes.
Or who the members would be. Those, and I think those of us who've looked at these kinds of commissions in other areas have concluded that, you know, sometimes that, sometimes they work well, sometimes they can work better if you had certain kinds of turnover or representation on the, on the commission. I know we did not have enough time to pull together all that feedback that we wanted before tonight, and it is my understanding, based upon a conversation that you and I had, that the desire is to form the commission so that we can move forward, to adopt the legislation, so that we can move forward with the process. And before that commission obviously begins work, we would amend the legislation so that we can deal with the specifics of the criteria, but we want to take our time to do that, but we want to get the process started. Could you address that a little bit, Ms. Whoopsir?
Through the Commission President, to the Commission President and the Commission, basically, the RFP, or the Request for Proposals for Firms or Entities to Assist the City in the Development of a Public Art Plan includes helping to develop criteria for how to best, for a city of our size, have a committee in play, you know, to select the criteria for those who would serve on a public art commission. And so, what we were thinking, because we've gotten some really good advice and some folks who have had some concerns to make sure that that body is, you know, that the criteria for those who would serve on that body could make or break whether or not the program is successful, what we've determined is, what we'd like to do is, since the RFP is out, is to select the firm, which we can only do if the legislation is passed, and then ultimately come back to the commission for two things, one of which is to get, have a motion to adopt that criteria, and then based on that criteria to also put together the steering committee, which would be the folks who would make up the public art committee as well. And so, our recommendation is that the commission goes forward tonight to allow us to be able to continue the process of creating the commission and to select the firm ultimately who will do the public art master plan, but that we would come back before that work began in earnest to, A, have the commission vote on the criteria for those who would be selected to that committee, and B, make appointments based on that, those criteria, to actually select the public art committee so they can begin the process of overseeing the creation of the plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Whoopsir. Mr. Poole?
Mr. Chairman, just a question. The ordinance, as it's written, what's the mod, is there a model, some community that you modeled this after? Trying to figure out where it came from.
Through the Commission President, to the Commission, and Mr. Foltz, or Director Byington, whoever, feel free to intervene, but, or interject. We looked at several communities, both larger communities, smaller communities, et cetera, and ultimately tried to find best practices that were suitable for Sandusky. We do think that the funding mechanism that we're using is unique. Being a small city with a big amusement park, it creates some advantages, and one of the things that I know, having been directly involved with public art projects, both internally at the city of Cleveland and then with a partner who developed public art, is that a bird? Is that a, who knows, but it's artistic, whatever it is, the, is, that in Cleveland, they had some serious challenges because they tied it to specific allocations of capital dollars on a project-by-project basis, which made it really hard and created very small increments that would be attached to projects that may or may not be the best place for public art. So, everybody recommended to us trying to have a funding source that is more flexible than a specific capital project yielding a certain amount, and ultimately, because the admissions tax is growing and was available, and we thought that that was a good fit for us, and that we would have a master plan that would be signed off on by this committee, and then ultimately the City Commission, that we could guide the investments to implement that plan, as opposed to trying to shoehorn something into a specific capital project that may or may not be the best location for art. But Greg can speak specifically to the cities that he looked at in addition to that.
Mr. Foltz, anything to add?
Through you, Commission President. We, we did look through, as in my presentation at the last meeting, we looked at various cities throughout Ohio and also nationally. And to Eric's point, it was just, made sense to tie it to that. And actually, we did the calculation, the amount would be very similar to the capital budget anyways, so the flexibility really allowed us to, to do more with less, basically.
Mr. Chairman, what cities? The question.
Question of what cities?
We looked outside of Toledo, at Sylvania Township, looked at the city of Cleveland, city of Columbus, the state of Ohio, city of Kent, Kent, and, and also Charlotte, outside of Ohio.
Do they all do the same thing as we did, a public, they're all publicly financed?
They're all, all very similar, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Poole?
Just speak to the ordinance. I would actually like, I think public art should be driven by the, the public, by the community. What is, is good art, and what people like or don't like is, it varies, and I think where, and I don't think that we should, as politicians, be driving that. I believe the best art project that we had here in this community dealt with the lighthouses that were built, and that was driven, I believe, by the community through the Merry-Gar-A-Museum. I did notice in the presentation that was made in last week, I did watch it because I wasn't here, you spoke of Belleville, Illinois, which has a, and you spoke about the 42 sculptures and things that they have there, along with the fact that they have a world-class art program at the, that they have every year. Well, that's not financed by the city. It's financed by the public and the independent organization or foundation in that community that runs that program. And the way it works is that they put on the weekend event, which has grown so large that they have hundreds of people from all over the world that apply just to bring their art. Foundation, the people of the community decide who they want based on that. It's a contest to decide who will even let come to this. And then, then as part of it, they sell what they call art bucks to the community, and with that money, they can buy the art that is shown at the event. And that's where the sculptures came from, because people donate those things after, afterwards. I just happen to feel that that's a better process. As I look around this community, I think we have people that are artistic that we should be dealing with. I'm really not excited about paying somebody else to tell us how to decorate our community. I really, truly would prefer that the corporations that are actually going to truly benefit from this, the, the wall space is going to be provided by private entities, that those folks take the lead on this and step up and, and do it. I really am not looking for my opinion about what, which, my opinion or who I select to tell you what we should put in your neighborhood. So, I'm going to vote no on this for those reasons to begin with. And secondly, the concept of identifying $40,000 a year in a budget that goes on forever before we even look at what's needed in the community in subsequent years, I just don't see that as being a good idea. I mean, to suggest that if we don't do anything else in the budget, whether we pay anybody, give anybody raises, we're going to put $40,000 in sculptures selected by a, by a select group of people that are appointed by commissioners, it doesn't ring as well to me. So, I'm going to vote no for those reasons.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I, the only disappointment that I have with this ordinance is that the money is so incredibly small. I wish it were a multiple of that, $44,000. I believe that the fabric of every community is based on a lot of things, and part of that fabric has to be the arts and culture. And I don't, I don't see this expenditure, $44,000, in a $23 million budget, as being significant. I certainly don't see it as being significant, appropriately significant enough. And I certainly am going to support this, and I would support, I will continue to support the arts and culture for as long as I'm sitting at this table.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Slough Art.
I am a big fan of art, and all things arts and theaters, and so it's, it's a good interest for a city to have art and to involve everybody in it. Can you or someone explain to me the composition of the, of this new commission and how it will go about its business?
Well, the composition of the-
No, no, I asked the staff.
Well, I'll answer the question.
You're going to answer the staff question?
I will answer the question as the president of this body. The, the commission would be constituted, as was previously indicated by Mr. Whoopsir, following an amendment that would be recommended by the consultant that's chosen in terms of the qualifications for the various members of the Public Art Commission. And then, the legislation itself provides that half of those members would be appointed by the manager, and just, just less than half would be appointed by the manager, and the majority would be appointed by the commission.
And why would that be?
And why would that be?
That's what the legislation says.
No, I mean, why, why did you choose that format? Half the manager and half the commission? Most boards we have are appointed by the commission, aren't they?
I didn't choose the format and know. Many of the boards that we have are mixed appointments by the commission, by the commission and the manager. That was the, this is a piece of legislation, like all others, that is recommended to us by staff. So I didn't have any involvement in setting that, but I reviewed it, and it seemed to make sense to me.
And so, that's the gist of it?
Right. Particular, the specific qualifications have not yet been established, and they need to be established before appointments to the commission would be made.
So we really don't know firmly what we're voting on yet?
We do. It's the legislation in front of us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Paul.
Do we send out an RFP to have someone tell us that if we're going to have a public arts commission, that the people on the commission need to have a background and some experience in art? Is that really what we're going to do?
That's part of it.
What else do you, does the staff or you envision this person is going to come backwards with qualifications? To give us advice on art that we otherwise have no idea exists?
Mr. Paul, it's in the legislation. I'm not going to read that back.
No, I'm trying to say, why? What else do you think they're going to be?
It's what's in the legislation. I'm not going to read it back.
Then why won't we pay somebody to give it to us, if we already know what it is? Why are you getting an RFP? That's the point.
Are there additional questions or comments regarding the legislation? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the roll, please?
Mr. Paul?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on second reading. Item number two, please.
Item two is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky, zone two parcels from residential multifamily district to general business district, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, this is the same ordinance, or same subject matter that we discussed in the hearing. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption, excuse me, of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is a first reading for an ordinance amending ordinance number 17-095, passed on May 8, 2017, approving an amendment to the cooperative agreement between the city of Sandusky and the Trust for Public Land for Professional Services for the Sandusky Downtown East Bay Plan.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Does someone care to make a motion to discuss this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading, subject to approval on a second reading. Item number four, please.
Item four is also a first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into the lease agreement with Ryan Hilli II, doing business as Great Lakes Grinders, for the operation of the Shoreline Park concession area to extend the term to an additional five years, an additional five years.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
This is an easy one. He's one of my favorite lunch stops. I am thrilled that he, I'm thrilled that he's going to be with us for another five years.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Item number five, please.
Item five is six, six?
Five.
Sorry. It's also a first reading on an ordinance amending Part I Administrative Code, Title V Officers and Departments, Chapter 145 Employment Provisions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky, and the manner and ways specifically set forth herein below.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
Let's see, Trevor here. Justin, can, can somebody kind of give a little bit of background information as to how we got here?
Okay, sure. Through the commission president, the commissioner Twine, and the commissioners. Trevor, as you know, works hand-in-hand with our HR department. What we've found out and noticed when we went back and looked at Chapter 145 and tried to get all the job descriptions in order for all the various job titles is, we've seen various job titles that don't exist, that are on the books, and current positions, whether it be through technological advances that are in existence now, that may not have been in existence in, you know, 20 years ago or 30 years ago, when Chapter 145 was initially created. What we also noted was that there was like 46, 47 different job classifications with various pays on the pay scale range. What we, the other thing we noted was that although this commission has approved, I believe, over the past 20 years, all except for maybe one or two years, raises, annual raises for cost of living, whether it be 2% or 3%, that was never reflective in the actual pay ranges. So what we noticed is that through the commission's approval on a yearly basis of the 2% raises, we're outside of the pay ranges as outlined in Chapter 145. So what Trevor and I thought would be helpful is, instead of having 46 different job classifications, kind of label folks, whether it be, you know, city manager, and a commission, employee, a director, a superintendent, and then, you know, support staff. So basically, five different various levels that can capture the pay raise. We didn't increase anything with the pay ranges. I think we only just brought in compliance with the 2%. We noticed that some people were outside of the pay classifications, not because when they're initially hired, they were hired, I guess, inappropriately, or paid improperly more than what was labeled. It's just over time, their salaries increased, and the codified ordinance never reflected their salary increases. So we thought it would be easier that when folks get hired with the city, that Eric and the city commission can basically say, this is a director, this is, you know, a foreman, and this is their classification, and these are the ranges. And what we hope to do is that on an annual basis, you know, commission willing to approve, you know, annual cost of living raises, we plan on hopefully bringing amended legislation on a yearly basis, consistent with what the city commission approves by virtue of any administrative raises. And this, by the way, only applies to non-union.
So it's just cleaning up those classifications that were basically obsolete, no longer used?
Correct.
Tightening up into, I think it's four or five different levels?
Trying to simplify it.
Okay.
Yep.
For the bands.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
But by doing that, Mr. Harris, we've gone to five, we've expanded out the total amount, and some of them to the range of pay is reflected by that also.
Correct.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That passes on first reading. Item number six, please.
Item six is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Venice Road Pump Station Improvements Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Mr. Klein, we talked about 10 seconds in the hallway. This has been on my bucket list a long time with all the flooding on the West End. I'm thrilled to see that this has happened. We had a lot of residents' concerns about flooding out there. And then in the past, when I was on the commission, before, we'd send out trucks to pump that water in the Cold Creek. We'd have two or three guys out there for two or three days at a time. So I'm thrilled to see that this finally is going to happen. Thank you.
Twine, you wish to provide an overview of the proposal? I mean, other than to say, you're back for yet another million dollars. Do you do projects of a smaller size?
Not anymore. Through, Mr. President. Out on the West End, as Commissioner Waddington pointed out, we've had some flooding issues out there. Now, we do have a separate storm sewer system and a sanitary system. This lift station is our sanitary system lift station. However, the contract that was approved for design and investigation about a year ago, that included an I&amp;I study, which is inflow and infiltration. And what we discovered going through McCartney Road and Bartschar, and a lot of those roads out in that area, was that there are some areas that we can tighten up. We've done a lot of work on our sanitary sewer system out there, but there are a few areas we can tighten up. A lot of that flow seems to be coming through those private laterals out there. So what we need to do to accommodate some of that additional flow is make sure that we can increase the capacity of that lift station. Right now, the lift station is about 2 million gallons per day. We can bring out a portable pump during high-flow events. We don't like to do that, but that's the only way we can stop basements from flooding. But when we bring out that portable pump, we pump directly to the creek. That's not something that EPA wants us to do. It's not something that we want to do. So this will allow us to increase the capacity of the lift station from two to about four and a half. So we're going to double our capacity out there. In addition to that, to look at the storm water flow, you guys approved us doing a design project a few months back on the McCartney intersection. So we're going to be looking at improving the storm sewers in that area, and putting another smaller lift station for the storm flow up there. And we're including in our capital budget for the storm, some work in the Bartschar area as well, on some of those streets, and closing some of those dishes, ditches. That's several years down the road, but that is something that we're looking at doing. So this project is, like I said, a sanitary project, but hopefully with all these projects that we're going to be doing in the future, we can handle a lot of, more of that storm capacity that's out there. One more thing that I would like to point out, because the question does come up, is that the Bayview connection that was approved a couple of years ago, and put in place a couple of years ago, that comes into our sewer system way downstream from this lift station, so that Bayview connection does not, is not affected by this at all. So I believe that's all I had. There was one typo in there. We cannot complete the project within the next four months, so it was May of 2019, not 18, so.
Questions or comments, Chris? Klein, I'd like to clarify that when we talk about inflow and infiltration, the I&amp;I that you've talked about many times, we're talking about groundwater, rainwater typically, that's getting into the sewer laterals, it's not that the sewer materials are getting out into the ground. Just the way that works is they, it's kind of a one-way thing. It seeps in, not out.
Sure. Mr. President, I probably should have explained that a little better, but that section, the houses out there are older. They were annexed into the city several years ago. We don't have a great idea of where the connections are, but we do know that a lot of the houses have combined sanitary and storm through some of those laterals. A lot of them are separated as well. But those older clay tiles, back before the '70s, they were built as clay. If there's a tree, they'll find the smallest opening in those, they'll break them out. So a lot of the groundwater, the rainwater, does infiltrate through these laterals and get into the storm, or into the sanitary sewer system. So that sanitary is not, it's finding the quickest route during dry flow and during the wet weather. That groundwater is pushing all that down the drain, so it's not getting into the ground for the most part.
Well, what do other communities do, if anything, about the I&amp;I in private laterals?
Well, some communities will implement ordinances that they have to completely disconnect storm laterals, downspouts, those types of things, and pump to the surface, and that goes directly to the yard. Other areas where there are combined system, they'll, as soon as you separate the sewers, they'll require that the storm water gets pulled out. Others will enforce dye programs and smoke testing programs to figure out which laterals do have breaks and problems in them. They'll flood front yards with dye and look, and maybe put it in sinks and things like that. And then they'll enforce repair of those laterals. Those repairs could range anywhere between 10 and, or between 2 and 10,000 to 15,000, depending on the situation. If it's a lot of the tighter neighborhoods throughout the city, it might be underneath the driveway, between two houses that are 15 feet apart, and that gets really costly to repair that. And sometimes you have to go across the road. So these repairs could get very expensive, and that's why the city, to my knowledge, has never enforced repairs, but always recommended it if we've noticed them, but we've never forced people to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Klein, just so, somewhere downstream, we're not accused of, downstream, I kind of like that. We're not accused of overpromising. It's not your expectation that basement flooding is going to go completely away by replacing these three pumps, is it? Because there's a, there are a multitude of things that cause basement flooding. This will certainly provide some relief, but not go away entirely?
No, there's, I don't know. With the capacity of the storm sewer systems out there, a lot of those pipes, like I said, are smaller. They're not, they're older, they're back from the '50s and '60s and well before that, because they were built before that area was annexed. So I don't anticipate this project completely eliminating all of the flooding issues out there, but it will reduce it as best we can.
And one of the things you're pointing out is that the neighbors are, in effect, flooding themselves or their neighbors, if they've got a leaking lateral.
Yes.
Tough thing to address.
It is.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number eight, which is our last regular item.
Item eight is an ordinance approving the emergency demolition work at the property located at 1719 West Madison Street, ratifying the award to and execution of the contract located at 1719 West Madison Street, ratifying the award to and execution of the contract with Ed Berdu and Company LLC of Sandusky, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in a full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. Mr. Whoopsir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll start with the donations first. A donation of $40 was received from Kathleen Fitz. I'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
So move.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to Ms. Fitz.
Thank you, commissioners. Also, I just want to once again say thank you to the Boy Scouts, St. Mary Pack Number Seven for coming tonight, as well as Amber, is it Mido? Mido? For leading them. We're really excited to have you here and to expose them to the inner workings of government, whether the exciting part or the not exciting part.
They don't look all that thrilled.
No, I know.
They perked up when you started.
Justin and I have been enjoying watching them from over here a few times. But we've been there, and look, we still ended up on this side of the... Worthwhile.
So be careful.
Glad you're here. Starting with the police department. A new bicentennial badge, as you may have read in the register, will be worn by members of the agency for the year of 2018. The badges are a throwback to an earlier badge designed worn by members of the agency with a more modern look to them. One of several ways that the city and that the police department in particular really stepped up to honor the new year and the bicentennial being upon us. It's just a really exciting thing. We're thankful to Chief Warzek and the team for putting that together. Also, on a somber note, retired Canine Justice passed away last week. We wanted to thank him for his service to the community. Our thoughts and prayers are with Detective West and his family as they took care of Justice during the two-year retirement beginning December 31st of 2015. Justice will be missed. In addition, the police department will be participating in the Parents Summit at Sandusky High School on January 20th from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. The Blue Stripes are trying to reach 500 parents to participate in this informative event. For more information and to register for the event, go to www.scs.k-12.net. Also, the officers of the department wanted to continue to wear beards or facial hair for the month of January, and as part of that have donated an additional $755 to the Special Olympics. So if you see the officers bearded or with facial hair for a short time, it's for a good cause, and they seem to really enjoy it as well. Moving on to the fire department. The fire department will also be participating in the Sandusky Schools Annual Parents Summit on January 20th of this year. Again, if you need information on that, www.scs.k-12.net. Moving on to finance. The city received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, or the GFOA for its 2016 comprehensive annual financial report. This is the 26th time that the city has received this award. Correspondence is attached to your larger packets. And again, I want to commend Director Salloway and his team for keeping the books clean so we can continue to receive these accolades for our accounting and services. Also, in December, State Auditor Yost released the 2016 Financial Health Indicators Report. According to that report, there are no critical outlook indicators, and there is only one cautionary outlook indicator. The remaining indicators were all noted as positive outlook, and as I'm sure you know and as Director Salloway explained to me, we're in pretty rare company to only have one indicator that was flagged at all, and I believe that's an improvement from past reports. So once again, a nice badge of approval for the work being done in the finance department.
I would point out, Mr. Whoopsir, while we're talking about that, that last year, Mr. Salloway, if I remember correctly, I think we got dinged, was that last year or the year before, on the age of our public infrastructure? And we've come off that list with the investments that we've made over the last couple of years. And we've got a more robust system across the entire system, whether it's water and sewer, or whether it's the police cars, or the trucks and the cars that we use, and the buildings themselves.
That's the one that we're still dinged on.
Yeah.
But it's getting better.
Okay.
So, yes, we are making more investments in our infrastructure and our assets, and that's, you know, it's just a mathematical equation that the state uses to kind of look at trends and forecasts. We were trending in the wrong direction on that one, and you could clearly see in the report, you know, 15 kind of peaks and then 16. And I would expect, it's like turning a ship, it'll take some time to get that down, to have that continued investment, it won't happen overnight. But I would expect us to probably get dinged on that again next year, but it's trending in the right direction.
You could send that to all of us. I couldn't find the hard copy report or the report online. I'd like to see that, too.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Whoopsir, sorry.
No worries. Public Works, with the tremendous cold slamming our city this winter, please take any additional precautionary steps necessary to avoid frozen water lines inside and outside the house, including setting thermostats at 55 degrees minimum, insulating exposed pipes, opening cabinets in other unheated areas where water lines are exposed, and letting the cold water faucet trickle continuously during extreme cold weather. More information can be found on the city's website. Also, the city has approved temporary no parking zones during the demolition phase of Ontario school improvements. No parking signs have been posted in schools' own, flashing beacons have been turned off. In addition, the division of streets and traffic completed leaf collection prior to the Christmas holiday. Thanks to new equipment that was tested this season, crews improved efficiency and versatility for all divisional tasks when switching between leaf collection and snow removal. Also, the GIS system aided with communications internally and with residents, and the drop-off location worked very well for those residents that chose to use it. We've collected data utilizing GIS that will help fine-tune the process in the future. Many thanks to Scott Cromer, David Borsec, Jared Smith, and other staff that helped in this effort. Also, all sidewalk improvements for the 2017 sidewalk program have been successfully completed. The surrounding properties will be backfilled, seeded, and mulched in the spring. Moving on to the Department of Community Development. On January 3rd, 2018, the city published the annual notice in the register outlining solid waste disposal requirements. Any properties that may have trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse in the public right-of-way or boulevard outside of the permitted times shall be declared a nuisance, and the city may cause said refuse to be immediately removed without further notice. If the city removes the nuisance, the cost of doing so, along with a $100 fee, shall be assessed to the property owner. As a reminder, trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse recyclables may be placed upon a curb for curbside collection no earlier than 6:00 p.m. on the evening prior to the scheduled collection of solid waste, and any solid waste or containers which remain after collection shall be removed from said curb no later than 8:00 p.m. on the date of collection. Also, we want to give a hearty recognition to George Polis, the former chief building official for the city, who's officially retired. Mr. Polis has served the city professionally and diligently since 2001, and has reviewed and overseen many major projects constructed in the city over the last 17 years, and has provided excellent mentorship and transitional guidance over the last three months to the city's new chief building official. We want to wish Mr. Polis well and his well-deserved retirement, although we look forward to working with him on a contract basis this year, as he's retained as the city's alternate plans examiner and chief building official. Finally, the 2018 guidelines and application for economic development assistance have been completed and are available for distribution. Once again, the city anticipates 450,000 available for projects this year, with an emphasis on substantial redevelopment, signage, facade, and small business assistance. Similar to last year, an interested party is required to complete a pre-application meeting with development staff prior to submitting an application. Guidelines and applications are available in hard copy form in the Department of Community Development. And anyone with questions or who would like to request an electronic copy of the guidelines, please contact Maria Muratori, Development Specialist, at 419-627-5891, or M. Muratori, that's M.M.U.R.A.T.O.R.I., at ci.sandusky.oh.us. For the planning department, they'll be holding the regular planning commission meeting on Wednesday, January 24th, at 4:30 p.m. in the first-floor conference room, and the regular board of zoning appeals meeting will be held Thursday, January 18th, at 4:30 p.m., also in the first-floor conference room. In closing with recreation, ordinance number 15-073 establishes the terms and conditions for Ohio Bike Week in June through the year 2021. Advantage Entertainment is requesting the date be moved up a week with the addition of Sunday, which would allow the event to run four days instead of the previous three-day festival. The requested event dates will be May 24th through 27th, with cleanup and teardown taking place on Monday, May 28th. We're requesting a motion for city commission to approve the date change for Ohio Bike Week's downtown block party to take place on May 24th through 27th, with the addition of the Sunday event making it a four-day festival. So I'd look for discussion on that issue. Thank you.
We need a motion second to talk about it. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the table is to extend Bike Week by a day.
Mr. Whoopsir, do I understand that, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cresser.
Mr. Whoopsir, do I understand that the extra day then is Sunday? Yes. Up until now, it ended on Saturday night?
Do you, Commissioner President, Commissioner Brady, just for clarification, we've always had a contract for four days with these folks. It was usually Wednesday through Saturday night, cleanup on Sunday. So it's still going to be four days. We're just moving it from Thursday all day Sunday, midnight Sunday, cleanup on Monday.
So an additional weekend day.
We've always had a contract for four days. Correct. And the only reason why we're asking a motion from the commission is that the actual contract is silent as to specific dates in 2018, 19, 20, and 21, but it just says same or similar weekends in June. So the fact that we're moving it up a weekend, or requesting it to move it up a weekend in May, we just wanted commission approval before we did that.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Harris. I had that wrong. Questions or comments on the motion?
I thought it was an extra day.
Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstained for the reasons I've abstained on all these motions in the past.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion passes.
That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Questions or comments for the manager? Mr. Brady, I know you have particular appreciation for the work that our streets crew has done over the course of the last week. Mr. Klein, hats off to them, working in extraordinarily difficult conditions, keeping the water moving in our city. We are very appreciative of their work. I mean, it's terrible cold, wet, dark, just extremely difficult work, and they do it so well, and we're very fortunate to have them. And they no sooner finished with all of the work that they did, unheralded in some ways, although I appreciate that you put it in your report, Mr. Whoopsir, with the leaf program, which was successfully completed this year. We had a lot of issues last year. Some of it was certainly caused by an early cold snap, so everything froze, the leaves froze before we had a chance to get them off the ground. The weather cooperated sort of this year, and we had a chance to pick them up, but we also just did a better job. We had better equipment, better plan, and better outcome. So thanks to those folks for the work they've done and they continue to do, and we're fortunate to have those folks who work in those very, very difficult conditions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cresser.
I share with my thoughts with a few of the employees that worked those hard hours this last week, and I will share them here. For those few people in our community that think working for a city is a cushy job, they have never been out in the middle of Perkins Avenue in a four-foot-deep trench at zero degrees with water flowing in your face. That is far from a cushy job. And to kind of put it in perspective, I read an article yesterday where the city of Cleveland has 24 four-man crews working round the clock repairing a water line breaks right now. We have a lot less people, but we are very effective at what we do. And if you've ever experienced a water line break, there's nothing that upends your life, whether it's your business or your home, more than to be without water. So we appreciate the engineering department's efforts.
Additional questions or comments for the city manager? Then we turn to items of old business. Anyone having any items of old business to raise? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I know I spoke with most of the commissioners and the city manager, Whoopsir, and then Mr. Flor got involved with the warming centers. I think we jumped on that a little bit late, but I'm hopeful that maybe staff could contact or send some, where we could find something on the east and west side for folks to get in out of the weather. You know, we're just not even midway through this winter yet, and I'm just worried about where do they go? When I go to work in the morning, I get up early, like 4:35, and I drive by the laundromat, Cleveland Road Laundromat. There's always three or four heads peeking out or standing there, and once in a while I stop and get a newspaper there and look in, and there might be a lady there with a kid or something. I'm thinking, wow, you know, we can do better than that, I guess is what I'm saying. Is there some way that we could, I don't want to make it in the motion form, but maybe have staff looking at it? Like, we had the conversation about it. I'm grateful for that church opening up, okay? But, so we're ahead of the game. If we see a cold snap coming in two or three days, here's what's available, and we got to do a better job getting it out. Everybody doesn't get the paper, you know, or the radio access. We need a better job where it's, they know it's consistent. If it's real cold, we get the bowl five or wind chill factor, I don't know what, I'm not the one to determine that, that they have a place that they can go, you know, and get out of this weather. And I think we need more and more, maybe east side, west side, or like two or three places that we could count on to open up. So I'd like to have Mr. Whoopsir maybe look into this.
Through the commission president, Commissioner Waddington, it was a fast exercise that we undertook when you raised the issue. And Talon Floor, our neighborhood outreach coordinator in the planning department, did do a really good job of reaching out to a number of stakeholders, including safety staff and local churches, et cetera. And we were commenting in getting the site set up with New Jerusalem that this was a good exercise for us, not only for this cold spell, but for future cold spells or any type of emergency or natural disaster. And so I think absolutely we can build and learn on, you know, what Talon was able to do on relatively short notice to get that set up. I like the idea of trying to find a location on the east side or stations where we can find that. So we'll get back together, talk about what worked really well from that last process, and talk about how we can be just as well prepared or even better prepared for the next one. And we are very thankful for your bringing the issue to our attention, because I think that it was certainly bad enough weather where, you know, something really bad could have happened had that not been available.
Mr. Chairman.
If I could also add, I'm concerned too about even neighbors or residents in Sandusky if your heat goes out, you know, in something like this, and it's 10 below, we all can't run out to the Holiday Inn. So just short-term till we get, you know, projects or this, that's what I'm looking at. That's another concern that I have as far as the weather, too.
I, too, want to thank you for raising the issue, because that's important. And I want to thank staff for acting on it so quickly, Eric and Talon, and the New Jerusalem Church for opening up their doors. You did it, I think, in about 24 hours, so that was really great. Other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart? Oh, Mr. Waddington.
Okay. One more thing.
Are you like doing a ventriloquist or something?
This one I hate to bring up. Okay. This one I hate to bring up, because we were there in early December at Karen's chair, but Mr. Brady, Ms. Murray, and Eric, you're going to be done, right? And I hope the other commissioners, I didn't get a chance to talk to everybody, can join us. We're going to do a canned food drive. That is going to be big in the next month. I talked to Linda Miller-Moore this morning. She was out sick, but she did get back with me, and I just told her that I'd be more than happy to do it this weekend. So we're going to do that from 10 to noon. If you want to make a check out and drop it off, because they certainly can buy the food from second highest side of the rain, or a lot better than, you know, us dropping stuff else. So if you want a donation or drop off canned goods or, you know, food to help out, because she said tomorrow will probably be a madhouse down there, you know, and that goes fast. We've been in there with the shelves, you know, filled, but it goes quick.
And I think you said, or maybe it was Linda Miller-Moore who said, it's something like a 20-to-1 ratio in terms of what, I mean, if you or I go out and buy $20 worth of canned goods, they can buy how much more with that same $10 or $20? A lot more. I don't remember the exact ratio.
Anybody who'd like to help out, stop down, we'll be there, and we'll have some coffee for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
like a 20-to-one ratio in terms of what, I mean, if we, if you or I go out and buy $20 worth of canned goods, they can buy how much more with that same $10 or $20? A lot more. I don't remember the exact ratio.
So, anybody who'd like to help out, stop down, we'll be there, and we'll have some coffee for you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional items of new business? Then we turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any items of city business, please give us your name and your address, and share with us your remarks, bearing in mind that we do have by our rules a five-minute.
Why do you say that when I come up here?
I didn't know who was, it's the luck of the draw. I try to remind people of the rule every so often, but I forget.
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. Back to the art commission. I know Mr. Zuloff wants a lot of strict references and things for the art commission, and I understand that, but you have to also remember, most of the people that look at this art like it or they don't like it. They don't have art backgrounds, they're not going to look at how the sunlight comes in on the lady's face and then it reflects down into the mirror. They just like it or they don't like it. And some of it they're going to look at and go, why did the city pay for that? But I, it seems odd to me to hire a company to come into the city to put together a commission of people and pick the spots to put the art. It's, we can sit there and look at the park and say, that would be a good place for a piece of art, or a tree, or not. It just seems forced. And what are the odds that it's going to be another place from Cleveland? There's a lot of artists that will come in from all over the place, and they'll set their artwork up just for the summer, or just for a month. And to me, you've got Washington Park, that would be a perfect place for that. Washington Park Art Gallery, right there. I could name four different, I can't name them by name, but four different artists that I've seen in different cities, and the stuff is set up, and it's beautiful, you can buy it, you, they, the city can buy pieces of it that they really like and they want to put it someplace. I just think that would be, I don't know if you want to call it looser, but to ask a bunch of people to come in from all over the world, tell them what Sandusky's about, show them what our buildings look like, and see what they can come up with to suit our city, not just, well, we have to have a certain amount of art that's very modern and contemporary, or something that's not so modern and contemporary, and you have a perfect balance, and it's all in the perfect places. They could come in, Chuhuli brought a whole load of his glass into the Franklin Conservatory one year, and it was beautiful. And the city liked it so much, they bought all of it, and then they rotated in and out of the conservatory down there. That's a lot of money. But, you could bring people in that would buy pieces of the art for their backyard, for their gardens, pieces that would fit our gardens and our waterfront. I just think that this seems forced to hire somebody to come in, to set this all up, to come in, to pick this all out, and we have to have just the right pieces. My biggest concern is, I think the best thing you should do is, so there's not a lot of hurt feelings, or, just like going to a party, you stay away from politics, you stay away from religion. And I think that we've had, we have a lot of art in this city. It used to be called tourist attractions, and people would come and take their pictures in front of it. Now they call it selfies, because you take a picture in a different way. But I think that, I think it'd be interesting, I think it'd be beautiful, but I hate to be locked into something that someone says we should have. Thank you. Oh, one other thing. This, this is wonderful. Where can I get more of these? Because when I go on appointments and stuff, I leave these on coffee tables for the other people to buy, or to look at.
Mr. Oriol might be the person to ask about that. The register published that.
All right. Thank you very much.
They are indeed beautiful.
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Carter may have answered one of the questions that's been plaguing me, which is why I'm invited to fewer and fewer parties, though, Mr. Brady, because when I go, all I talk about is politics and religion, so.
It's more than that.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I just wanted to add a little thing to this $43,000 a year art. I noticed that the staff got a 2% raise. That's a pitiful raise.